Alright, what we're gonna do at this point is that there are lots of things that need to be clarified on this paper in front of us. Including copies of that traffic report that was alluded to several dozen times from the testimony. Members of this board want to see that traffic report and have time to analyze it. What we're gonna do today is there are a lot of people in the audience who have questions about this. I'm gonna open it up to the audience for questions. You can only ask and talk about things that you've heard in the testimony tonight. If you go off that line, I'm gonna stop you. I'm also gonna caution you, short, sweet, and no repeat. If you start repeating what's said before, I'm gonna stop you. So it's gotta be something new, okay? So at this point in time, I'm gonna open it to the public. If you have any comments regarding this, what you've heard so far, please come forward.
My name is Mark Lustbader, spelled L-U-S-T-B-A-D-E-R. Drive 447 Northfield Avenue, West Orange, New Jersey. This is 705 East Park.
Mr. Lustbader, good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Your statement.
I'm here to basically briefly come in as a local property owner that own the opposite corner of this proposed development. At the Old Bayway Circle with the Capital One Bank is and the One Two Warehouse Bank is. I built this property in 2010. I did that intersection, sorry. Did that intersection myself personally through my customers. Two hats on as to give you this information. One, as a developer owned by that property. Secondly, the One Two Warehouse is a common property. I've been working with the principal system, the Luther Russell's old cross street, to deal with a very serious traffic and safety issue in that area. Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
I used this. The issue involves principally the pickup companies doing school out of us, but also surrounding non-people as well. Our park is jammed with people dropping off, walking their children through it. Of course, I don't know if it's in school. It's a problem for our businesses, the bank and the One Two Warehouse. And it's a problem because young children can walk through parking lots that are overparked. It's very dangerous. The reason that park lot becomes particularly congested is because of the traffic highway circle. When the light is green or when the light is red at the corner, the traffic backs up into the circle. And then the others will try to come in and make a right and then turn out of our park lot. And that's just waiting there for a very long time until that queue clears. And I think the board has probably raised the issue of the potential stacking of traffic being further increased at the presence of this development. So I share that concern. I think it's something that really needs to be seriously considered. The other points I may are kind of along the lines of what has already been raised about it. Whether that will be effective or maybe someone wants to enter the property from just stopping. I think it's highly likely that that's the normal behavior people have. And I think it just has the potential to be a real disaster. I'm not here to protect the business, which is part of it, of course. But we have a problem there. And on the principle, I suggest you get some input from the school board. I've spoken with them. Because I think that they recognize the problem. And I think it is a real major disappointment. It's only given a lot of interest in this business.
Can I ask you a question? Since you have a business name, what are the hours of that school?
The school?
The school?
It gets really bad between about 8 o'clock and 8:30 to drop off.
So it's why you're late, you know?
I think that's true. And I think in the afternoon, it's a pickup, excuse me, I think it's the 3:45.
7:00 to 7:30 to 3:45. And if the school program gets run wrong, we could have a lot of problems. Board of Education. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lustbader. Is there anyone else in the audience who has any comments or suggestions? Please come forward. State your name. Ms. One.
Paul Coshta, P-A-U-L-O-C-O-S-T-A. I live at 636 Norman Terrace, which is about four blocks away from the vicinity. And I have children that go to this school. And my biggest concern with already knowing the traffic is what was already going up with, you know, how much congestion, how much more. And, you know, it really raises, to me, that's a word you're ready with. Buses, parking in front of the school, parents still parking. And this, I mean, it gets like really crazy with it. Let's say, especially from, let's say, 7:30, which school starts, to about 8:00. And then there's an early let-out which start about 3:30. And then the late let-out, which is about almost 5:00.
That's K through A2?
Uh, yes.
K through A2?
No, it's K through, uh, K through 6.
K through 6, that means 6th and 7th?
I don't know.
We need to reach out to Board of Education, yes, yes.
Yes, definitely.
Anything else from the side? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who has any comments regarding this application? There are a lot of people out there, but I haven't seen anyone getting on. Mr. Chairman, it's K through A2.
K through A2?
K through A2. And that's why I feel happy today. Because we'll find out how many people are at that school. Seen no other people. What I'm gonna do at this point is I'm gonna take this application. I strongly suggest, Mr. Van Hager, will you be available to meet with these folks? Tell them what we need to see next time around? You wanna take Mr. Van Hager's card. We are, we're gonna adjourn this. There will be no meeting in May due to the fact that I do not believe this board will have a court. I know three of my commissioners will not be here in May. And that leaves us with no court at this point in time. So at this point, I'm gonna adjourn this to the 6th of June, which I believe our meeting is accurate.
That's correct.
6th of June. And we will pick it up hopefully with some traffic studies in our hands and with some plans that show us what we're missing on this one.
Just refer to the state number, survey, and examine first.
That is exactly correct. After the initial testimony, I suppose Mr. Lustbader will come back up and with some additional testimony to clarify. And Mr. Oliver will have the opportunity. And any of the folks in the audience who want to come back and apologize about it, but we can't make a decision without all the evidence. And we don't have all the evidence tonight since the traffic study is not before us. No additional notice unless there's barriers discovered. No additional notice required unless there's barriers. This is the adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, the board of state hail, 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 represent anything?
I don't have anything. This is a great project for the city of Elizabeth. I don't have this benefit. This location for approximately seven years. Probably listens to the radio, read the commercials, dealing with electronics. And what they're looking to do here is to commit into the city of Elizabeth and expand their facility. Really, it's going to be, even though the size is increasing, an increase in the nature of work there, a big modernization of their shipping and receiving. And as Mr. Drummond was saying at the right of him, the products that they now deal with, larger televisions and the like, require more space and more location. And they're also going to be having greater quantity of products and shipping and receiving. And that's the reason for the expansion as proposed. We have received through a letter from Arbor Consultants. We have no problem applying any of those terms of conditions. Our site engineer, Thomas Quinn, will address those as I have raised in the report. The existing structure is approximately 90,000 square feet. And they're looking to expand it by approximately 58,000 square feet. The set of changes in the basic operations there. We change the basic operation of the facility, other than again, modernization. We realize and will have testimony that there is a parking requirement associated. But as this board well knows, the MRCs on the parking is dictated by the size of the lot and not the use requirements. Mr. Drummond was saying that they have shipped work. They've been there for seven years. They have established employees. They encourage car pulling. They have vans to transport. Employees, a lot of their employees take advantage of public transportation. And the parking that's going to be provided as part of this application will be a point of addition for their uses. And the building, as you see, will be solidly building, will be greatly improved. Going to, what's her comments, apartment homes. Having areas of decorative fence, which I know this board, this only board has in Paris, without the city of Elizabeth. And we really think that this is a great project. And if there's no preliminary questions, what I'd like to do is call on Mr. Harry Drummond from the Adara Corporation.
Would you stay here if you were to swear here for a particular question? You swear that the testimony that you're making tonight?
I did, Mr. Van Hager, City Planner.
Mr. Adara, you solemnly affirm that the testimony we gave tonight is the whole thing. Have a seat, take the microphone. State your names, spell your names, so I get it right.
Harry Drummond, D-R-U-M-P-R. 5019, 5019 Street, New York, 10119. I'm gonna take this slide.
Mr. Adara.
Mr. Drummond, first of all, do you want to explain your position with the Adara Corporation?
Chief Engineer.
Now, I indicated that perhaps the board has heard your company's ads on the radio and the like. Tell us a little bit about the history of Adara and the company and what it does.
We've been in business for a little over 35 years in New York. It's photographed, photographic equipment, electronics equipment, and other world skilled with it. Just couldn't do that.
And?
Make sure the businesses, most, 80%, I'd say, is internet orders coming in. There's probably around close to 10% done through call. We have a little center for calls coming in. And the rest is, we have a brick and mortar store in New York City. On 18th Street, covering from 18 to 17, 56.
Now, how long have you been located at the site in Elizabeth?
Just, just seven years.
And what is the nature of the business that's conducted there? And I know that we put in the application, Arbor Consultants, that it's wholesale stores and packaging and dieselized products.
It's a fulfillment center for all their orders. All inventory stored here comes in, all orders picked and shipped. Hopefully the same thing in their, their world.
Now, what does this addition that you're looking to do represent this board committing to staying here in the city of Elizabeth? And why is it critical to have this addition?
In seven years ago, when we bought this, we moved into this property, mostly just cameras, these smaller type of equipment. And we set up the flow of products that way. These last few years, TVs, large printers, all sorts of large equipment. And in order to efficiently compete with the Amazons or something, or the Womars, you have to touch the equipment once in an hour, otherwise it's costly. Just goes through the roof. So we have to, we're gonna add this new space where we can accommodate the largest, larger products coming in from one side and put away, touched once, and shipped out from the other side of the same roof.
And I mentioned my opening statement that it's coming more, what do you think? It's pretty crazy to board about that.
In order to, to, in order to put away, in order to pick up these large products. It's not something to pick up here. If you're gonna do this with the standard higher level. You just gotta, it's, it's unidentical. It's, oh, you say certain, certain ways dangerous, if it's not that way. So there are, there's plenty to hit there. Just the, the routing systems that are available to do this. We have, we have Kiwi, is a, is a company that's actually owned by Amazon. They're phenomenal type of weird, it's automated. Put, we put it on a small two by two, one by two little piece. Carries it to where it's supposed to be. There's the automatic lifter that will lift it up and bring it. That's about something. It'll just, it makes, it makes us to be able to compete, like I said, with the Amazon or Walmart. And for us to stay in business in this area, this is what we have to have, what I do. Just to indicate that we've, we've figured till, for waiting for a process to see what can be done. We had to take right back to us, near us, a 55,000 square foot location to be able to rent, rent for a month, month by month basis just now to be able to somehow compete lower our costs.
Is that, is that a temporary thing that you're doing so that you can reconfigure this building?
That is correct.
And it's in the same area?
Yes, it's a, you know, a trunnels through the old building.
Single?
Single.
Now, I indicated my, my opening about the parking and the number of parking spaces. And have you based upon your experience, and let me back up on that. With this proposed addition, are you going to change other than what they changed the number of employees or your hours of operation?
I don't have, don't have. The only, the only thing that would be comfortable would be everyone to know exactly how many parking spaces you have. I'm trying to remember, 56?
Yes, 56.
We have around 42 cars depending on the shift. We have, we currently work from 6:00 to 2:00 is one shift. From 2:00 to 10:00 is the second shift. Five, sorry, Monday through Thursday is the hour 6:00 to 10:00. Friday, it's 6:00 to 3:00 depending on the staff of this. And Sunday, we're there, same photo, usually. The only, for, we're gonna change a little bit, complicate it, make it one chain. Starting half an hour earlier. So this way, the first shift would work five minutes to one thirty. And we have a half an hour break in between second shift and work to 10:00. The reason for this is because looking at, based on the new plan of parking, there's some tandem parking. So there, so there shouldn't be any kind of overlap. There shouldn't be guys who are leaving, the guys who are first shift and second shift. There should be no, no traffic, no, no tandem.
Now, with respect to one of the other items that we talked about was having your, it's streamlined your shipping and receiving areas. And I know your professionals, Mr. Quintero, explained the site plan in more detail. So maybe what's separated that, again, how this loading dock configuration will affect your addition?
Currently, everything comes in in the middle of the buildings. And you have to move stuff when it comes to shipping or picking. Definitely have to handle the same product two or three times before you can ship that. This group system, efficiency, new rack, different type of fur. It'll be touched once when it comes in. And when the label goes on, it shakes out.
Now, also, you've had an opportunity, you received, the board has kind of sent over the departmental comments. I see everyone has recommended this application. Also received a letter from Arbor Consultants. Do you have any problem complying with any of those terms of conditions?
None whatsoever.
And you know, one of the items on the city's, as I mentioned before, Mr. Van Hager had suggested about the fencing, maybe more attractive, the corporate fencing.
I would say this, if we're gonna build on this property, the fence will have to come off first to build it. And it adds a value to our property as well as it has to lead to the city.
Thank you. And generally, can, what's the, because I know there will be tests. The number of new industrial area, the approximate number of trucks coming, going from the site. Delivery is high on average?
We, we get, I would say, about eight, eight, then I approximately coming in, goods coming in. We have six to seven trucks coming out.
And we had talked about this in your preparation, but the number of loading docks is because now different trucks will have any different product in and go.
Different, that's correct. Depending on the location, where it's gonna be stored and where it's gonna be unloaded. That's where we're going with it.
So you're not only reconfiguring the outside of the building and the heavy line, you're reconfiguring the inside to be able to drive it?
Correct.
Alright, thank you. I have no further questions.
Any questions, Mr. Drummond? Councilman?
Yes, just one. Just one big one question. By the noise, how do you, how many employees hire there? We currently have, I'd say, 127 employees there. Okay. Quite a new addition. The idea of the, of the efficiency is not to be, not to have to hire, but to be able to increase double, triple the business with the same number of employees. One last question. If you know, if you know, how many employees do you have, are you have from Elizabeth? You say this, we bring in, we have, there's about 35 employees that are coming in from New York. The rest of the employees are, whether it's Newark or Elizabeth, I don't know exactly, but they're all familiar. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, sir? Mr. Ham? Yes?
Yeah, I have a great question. That the parking, very light ratio, normally for warehouse, this is not for warehouse. Industries can be comparable between one space for 250 square feet. You're much lighter than, you're about one space for 200 square feet. It's a very light ratio, I mean, inches. But obviously, you own the building.
Put it this way, we, with a lease, we've got a lease with a, at the end, we, it's not the option, it's a unit, he has to sell it. It's gotta be sold. These are packages, I guess, so have a hand.
Any ownership of the building? We have to make substantial investment in some door building, not a long-term lease. And I just wanted, but I guess if you do have a parking issue, you could actually go and reconfigure some of your lot. And ratio of the very lot. We, we only don't like any cities between buildings that can't do often. But in this service, thanks to your, you do have other areas here for parking. It's just that we're, the ratio, it's very large, you're having to. How many cars do you think park there now?
Well, we have, depending on, four or seven shifts, we have between 38 and 43 cars. Depending on the shift. A lot of people come in about 12:00. A lot of people in this lot. These are people that burn between 10 and 12 hours of work. They're not, they don't spend too much. Transportation, public transportation is there.
So if you're doing quite substantial expansion, you feel 13 spaces may be required for your... 13, you only had 13 parks. So if you're doing about 30?
Let me say this, we've, we've had 120 employees for the last 45 years. Most of them, we've kept very, very few employees leave. We had very, very steady. We've always found in some of around 40 for the number of vehicles that we have. And don't be, with this new expansion, what we're gonna do is, is make it more efficient than what we, this part of it.
Because as I was, we have a parking example with kennels, the most first automated truck to a warehouse. No parking, entirely automated. The buildings that we build, the preferred freezer buildings have that type of automation. But if you've ever been in there, truck comes and gets put on a case, they put on a pallet, into the freezer, puts stuff on a shelf, comes back out of the mix. That's why I basically question to the developer, not the engineer. Because who knows his operation better than what we're planning in the future? Yes, of all ways. Warehouse becomes more automated every year or so. And just basically, the roof height of the building is, what's the new structure, high bars?
Actually, one of the projects for this will be from the city office.
Yeah, we'll talk there. I'm just curious.
Okay, so the trucks that come to the site, they will come at the same time, they'll come in all through the day. Every trucker comes in, there's a gentleman that has a call and then they have a delivery. Kind of get an appointment for three days in that room. So it doesn't look like they're just showing Spanish, Spanish, whatever. Come in, get unloaded. Come again, get unloaded, especially with the current system of boxes.
And one thing I would like to discuss earlier, we had a, on, the engineer is one of the young there, that we had these sites in Elizabeth that come through the doors and we're seeking that the greater wire, the bottom wire, along the frontages of Julio, Atalanta, and U C D, and then go to Ohio Chain Link, which is curated for. Since we've had, even especially with the cheap part, there's razor wire going through the con, these cuts, these cuts, the chain link. So the razor wire is a deterrent, but not that much of a difference. It looks like, you know. And I guess you don't have, you don't possibly feel to try to get some better or better trust like you've been doing at Atalanta, Atalanta did, the way you're represented, you know, the cost of the cost. That's, that's maybe that value.
We are going to, we are trying to do it, we can't do this.
Those are what we.
Yes, I'd like to call upon James where.
Five chairs to have any on this. Where is the people, who wish knives and licenses license are still in effect? You accept them as a.
Excellent. It's very, you're both a registered licensed architect, a professional planner, a state of Jersey, correct?
That's right.
Mr. Quin, you've heard my open statement, Mr. Drummer, and if you can take the board through the overview of your, the cover sheet, the plan, and then the architectural elements, layout of the building, and also touch on the changes we've selected.
Okay, the first page of the door is J zero zero zero. The upper left of the door, this is other information. And there's two variants, we said, uh, looking at, it's the front yard areas, the required thirty-five inch, and the upper requesting is fifteen feet. And, and then so the white of the zone information is kind of an overview of the site. Plane bounded essentially on the three sides by streets. On the left side is Slater Drive and on top of the sheet is Julio Plaza, which travels to the, to the lane, around the curb, from then the street name changes to Atalanta Plaza, which continues off. So it's, it's only that the bottom of the sheet is the only side of the property that is actually adjacent to another property. So this property has a lot of front yard. The principal front yard, the building, everyone enters the building, we park their cars, it's on the left side of Slater Drive. The, what we're proposing is on the top of existing building, the top of the sheet, is putting a, we call it a bunker, in addition, it's about forty feet high. Pretty much the same height, you know, parts of this building. And then on towards the bottom of the sheet, see there's two other sections, where again, we're getting forty foot high warehouse sections on there, as Mr. Drummer has described earlier. And the additions will be going on and then the entire interior of the new and the old, the regular figure, to straighten line the processes that take place inside. Fifteen foot, that takes place on the top of the sheet on Julio Plaza. You know, the building is about fifteen feet back from the parking line. Then there's some lower land to the curb, to the wider stream. And then there's, across the stream, there's the old city building. So there's adequate open space, you know, for, basically all sides of the building. On the bottom of the sheet, there's other areas, they're, they're looking at a yard areas, twenty-five feet aside, twenty feet, which is basically ample room for a vehicle, a truck to pull through there and for fire safety purposes for vehicles to move through there. And then all the other sides of the building are basically have street access. And the other various that we're just talking about excessively is the parking areas. Again, as Mr. Quin has explained, the zone door accessory determines the number of cars based on the size of the site. We're requesting that these sixty-six cars be moved because then adequate the wise parking for the new people that are here and the operational method having gap between the first shift and the second shift allows enough time for the first shift people to empty the site and for the second shift to come in and then park their cars. And the bulk of the people actually coming by taking a mass transit.
Mr. Quin, I know when you talk about the area of Julio Plaza as it turns into Atalanta Plaza, that area now is completely taped up to the main actually on the parking line.
This, this site, and Mr. Quin will show that the board, essentially this whole site is blacktop, everything is present.
And that will actually, the purpose will be slightly diminished.
Mr. Quin will talk about, it's always been a tough area, in terms of, we've actually slightly diminished the purpose service and reduced green areas.
Now, if you could take us through the balance of the plan you prepared, including the elevations, the improvements that are being made through solid building.
Okay, the existing building is about a foot or five ninety-two thousand square feet and there's three subdivisions, which adds close to fifty-nine thousand square feet. So, so the total building size moves from ninety-two thousand eight hundred to one hundred and sixty-one thousand six twenty-five. On the.
One fifty.
Sorry, one fifty, yes, sorry. The third sheet, which is A two hundred, coming from, is the outside of the building. Basically, the elevations, the walls of the building, it's about forty feet high. There'll be insulated metal panels, very similar to really the building across the street in the back of the Atalanta, those all metal panels. It's basically similar construction ethic, they'll be a neutral color or nothing carries. So it's a fairly simple, you know, warehouse.
And Mr. Quin, from the architectural standpoint, do you have an opportunity through the Harvard Consultant there, the departmental comments, any problem you have mind for any of those factors conditions?
No, we can cover most of everything in the market area, as we've been talking about. The owners are being, anybody know of that? And we've pulled up a piece of wire, so it looks a little bit like a.
You've already testified on page three or four of the Harvard letter about the building design elements. Will all mechanics, contractual equipment be sufficiently suited to shield it for the areas where.
The mechanic systems on this, on the roof, Mr. Quin, sorry. Pen mechanic systems that are on the roof, air handles etc. on the screen. The entire building, of course, goes to all, how are your quotes?
Thank you. I have no further questions at this time, Mr. Quin. Missioners, questions, Mr. Quin? None, you want your next witness, Mr. Quin? Yes, I'd like to call on Tom's point. All right, Mr. Quin, I think you appeared here before this board on many occasions, but if you could briefly give your credentials.
Sure, we can, Mr. Quin has been here as long as your licenses are. Don't mind him, don't mind this wondering, looking at the big wood is, if, uh, you're receptive as attachment.
Thanks. And your licenses, both are professional engineer and.
Professional, okay.
Mr. Quin, you've heard again my open statement, Mr. Drummer and the testimony of Mr. Quin. If you could take the board through the engineering aspects of the site and address the Harvard Consultant there.
I'm gonna go ahead and go to the board, the caller right there, that I thought had to help you.
And you saw that board as exhibit.
That's correct. The first one I've shown here is the existing conditions, marked as A one, and they.
And Mr. Quin, if you could speak, make sure you're facing. Freddie?
I've been listening. Okay, so you heard, I don't wanna compitulate a lot of the testimony, but we basically have a five point five acre plot.
Yeah, send me a favor, don't be nonchalant.
Okay, okay. We have a five point five acre plot that's located in the M R C zone. You've heard Mr. Quin talk about how it's unique in that it's surrounded, missing the three sides by riverway and shares a common property line with industrial property to the south. Of the existing five point five acres, five acres of it now consist of purpose service and that consists of a two point one acre building and a two point nine acre mark. So essentially the site is ninety-two percent impetus. The site is entirely bounded by an existing chain link fence with razor wiring for that that discussed. And the way the site operates now is basically four access points with, that are actually the gates in the existing fence. So the first, most prominent access point is located here on the north side of Palaeo Plaza. Palace of the Truck, you're gonna see this. Yeah, yeah, that's right. So you've got this main access point here on Palaeo Plaza. Again, all these are gated.
You have an access point somewhere.
Yeah, we have an access point on Palaeo Plaza. Again, all of these are gated control, only gate controls. Now moving clockwise, there is another access off Atalanta Plaza, located here, the blacktop area on the eastern side of the site. There is a third access also on Atalanta Plaza at the southern border, at the eastern border site. There is the fourth and final access point at the western side of the site, located off Slater Drive. Now, the way the current, you've also got, the loading areas currently are kind of bracketed by these large concrete pegs, they kind of indicate where the current loading activity happens. So you've got loading out here on the north side, you've got a loading area here on the west side. We've got an existing loading area here on the south side. And then they've got this loading area here, which is also on the south side. This loading area is unique to the others in that this is actually a drive into the building situation. The throat here is very shallow for any kind of truck storage, so vehicles that use this dock actually enter the building. See if I forgot anything. Just briefly, all the site lighting that exists now is all building mounted lighting. We have an existing striped car stall area of forty-six stalls. And I wanted to mention the razors, because I wasn't coming up with the same number as Mr. Venere. And I'll get to that in a minute. That kind of is a synopsis of the existing conditions. And I'll move on to the proposed unless somebody has a particular question about the existing conditions.
Any questions, have a question?
Okay. I'll put this down, so you have a kind of juxtaposing against, what I'm now showing is the proposed condition. And this exhibit is marked as A two, again with today's dates. This represents the proposed conditions. Now, I didn't explain, this is kind of, just to keep it public, but in case you were not here. The dark C P A area is the existing building. The lighter orange areas are the proposed building additions. In a total, let's say, there are about fifty-eight thousand square feet additional floor area. The gray areas are the paving areas and the green is obviously. The pavement, the gray areas, the, the paving areas, and the green areas, the, the green areas, the landstone areas, the non-hard stone areas. Okay, so we've got, as you heard, I haven't talked about the building conditions, it's really meant to kind of create discreet centers for the various products that they are bringing to the center and they're, they're meant to eliminate excessive handling of these things that have made the operation more efficient. So in order to implement this plan, the following changes will occur to the access points we discussed. The prominent access point we talked about at Palaeo Plaza is closed off. That one again will be replaced with a solid fence. Again, move clockwise. We're adding an additional access point off Atalanta Plaza here in the, it's kind of the eastern side to access the loading dock that's attended with this building. They're going to maintain this existing loading area, which is the drive area. They're maintaining this access area, we're modifying it slightly to improve the ability of trucks to do now, but this will be maintained. The existing press curb and rolling gate in this vicinity will also be maintained. We're adding another press curb and rolling gate area here to access this loading dock. So in terms of access to these various docks, this access here of Slater Drive is the principal direction trucks travel to use this loading dock. They'll back up, when they come out here, they'll be precluded from making a right turn because the maneuver is tricky. So you'll see on the sidewalk, there are signs saying trucks must exit left, because it's an easy move. By the same token, this loading dock here, which is an existing loading dock, is accessed in the opposite way. Trucks will pull in here, pass the building, back into this loading dock, then exit out of the loading gate, the existing loading gate area. This loading dock, the new loading dock here, this is gonna require trucks to pull off Atalanta Plaza and then back into the stop, there's no other way to access this dock. This loading dock up here, the other new dock that's being cut here on the north side of the building, will be accessed via trucks backing off Slater Drive. Again, this facility uses W P sixty-five trucks, which are about the largest truck you see on the highway. If you look and you see a trailer that says fifty-three on it, that's a W P sixty-five truck. That's what they use here. So these trucks require quite a lot of maneuver. So we have opened this curb, there is existing curb on Slater and it's kind of. An open curb, of the open curb on Slater Drive in order to accommodate, and it's quite wide, because we need to accommodate trucks backing up, they have quite a swing. This is all been designed, we're utilizing an auto cab truck temperament term. So we've physically actually driven the trucks through, so we have a good feel that the circulation we provide here mirrors what will actually be required. Okay, we're talking a little bit about access, we're reconfiguring this western parking area that currently show forty, a total of forty-six spots. We're gonna end up with fifty-five stalls. And I actually got a ratio of, I'm not sure if it was math, it's fuzzy, first one, but I got a ratio of one stall per twenty-seven hundred square feet in the population. So that's very nearly the ratio that you expressed as a usual one for warehouses, which is one over twenty-five hundred.
Looking at the architect's plans, you have fifty-eight thousand square feet proposal with the existence reference. The total.
Let me tell you.
The total square footage would be one fifty, one six twenty-five.
Right.
It was using two thirty-seven.
Okay, yeah, that's why I couldn't figure that out. So we're not that far from the ratio that you've indicated was more typical of warehouses. Okay, we added, as part of the reconfiguration, we've added some drainage inlets, they're connecting all these. Some drainage inlets, piping, basically just to maneuver around the proposed buildings. They've got on-site drainage that we'll be tapping into as we configure it. Talk to Fred, okay. Essentially, I think that we're adding drainage inlets and piping to work around the changes on site brought about by the building footprint. We've added some.
Capacity, capacity out in streams.
The capacity, we're not adding any additional runoff because we're not increasing the purpose service. So I usually analyze capacity when we were burdened the system by any increase in purpose service. That wasn't...
That's a good question.
Yeah. We've also added some building mounted lights to highlight the loading areas. The parking lot, existing parking lot here that's being reconfigured is as I indicated. It's currently lit by lights that are mounted on the building, directional lights that are focused towards the parking lot. We're leaving that as it is because we're not, while we're reconfiguring the parking lot, we're not moving it away from the existing light source. So we talked with the advocate about that. They're very safely conscious there. I didn't actually add it at night because night is coming later and I was waiting to get a chance to look at it. But we discussed that in the setting, it was very, we're very comfortable with the lighting they had out there, supplemented by the loading dock lights that were going to be there. And again, we're actually just about exactly the same purpose service as posted as three because the areas, if you see these dark areas, hashed areas, those are new pavement areas. This is actually reconditioned. These are new pavement areas. But this strip, the single hatch strip that runs along Palio Plaza, that's pink, basically red to bright red. So we'll be removing all of that paint. We're adding a couple of land, a couple of street trees in here to supplement the ones that are already onsite. Tried to fill in what we felt it was warranted. And essentially, that's the outline of my testimony for proposed conditioning.
And again, as I mentioned to Squair, in reviewing the Harvard consultant letter dated March twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen, do you have any problem complying with any of those terms or conditions?
I have none. Now, we addressed the fence, that was the big issue, but no, I have no issues with any of this. The one thing that Mr. Venager asked for that I was polite is the capacity calculation for the eight-inch PVC pipe.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Venager asked for the capacity calculation for the eight-inch, capacity calculation for the eight-inch PVC pipe. I'll provide it.
And your office also had prepared a survey that you submitted to?
I should have that maybe I did a copy for Mr. Venager, if I may.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Missioners, any questions, Mr. Quin?
I have one.
Yes, I have. I have one for the board. Quinn, in your review, the two loading docks, the one loading dock on Atlanta Plaza and the other one on Palio Plaza, on the two proposed, one story...
On the east side?
Yes, on the lower left and the right. You stated that the lower right.
Yes.
Now, yeah, both of those. Now, you're saying both, the trucks that are on the loading docks will exit out on Atlanta Plaza. Right, back into the loading dock, only for this one?
Only for that?
Yes. And that happens, by the way, that's, that happens currently with this loading dock area here. This is a drive-in. That happens now. Looking at the architects plans, they're showing the vehicles, both of them exiting off of Atlanta and back into that facility. They don't need to back into this one because they can pull straight.
They're showing, actually, in his drawing.
That's, it's not necessary. The only dock that requires that maneuver, well, there's two. This one, they have to back in off the Shen House. This one, they'll have to back in off Slater Drive. Slater Drive is more like an industrial truck road anyway. It's not a busy road that will be, you know, clogged up by a truck momentarily backing up into it. So this loading area and this loading area would require backup movements from outside, essentially.
Okay, and when on the lower left, how does the truck enter and get into that loading dock?
This guy?
Yes.
There's a rolling gate here.
Okay.
They'll enter this gate, they'll travel past the building, and they'll back up into the dock. Now, if there are other trucks in that loading dock, there's sufficient enough area for them to maneuver their vehicles? Because you're saying these trucks are the largest amount? Yes, as a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, I would refer to a drawing of the audio submission package, so I don't need any more. It's sheet three of four, and it's called the truck of the plan.
Yes, that's the one.
Right, that's my drawing, that's accurate. So what this shows is that all three loading docks are full. This maneuver is meant to show me, it's supposed to be a truck passing. If there is a, if there is already trucks, see, this fellow, he's gonna have to partially pull out into the road in order to...
Well, that was my original question.
Right, if he's not the only truck in here, he's going to have to...
How open is that door?
I can't say, but I have to be the advocate. Because I'm not fully with how these loading areas are going to function. I don't know how many times they'll happen.
My concern is that I'm not too familiar with that exact area. So I would like to just find out, you know, just how much traffic is located or going on there on Atlanta Plaza because of this ready area, this showing that if you do have two or three of those bays filled, a truck is going to have to go past that, exit onto Atlanta Plaza, back into one of those stalls.
As I said earlier, the trucks come in based on, I think, probably when he comes in, before he makes delivery, he has to make an appointment. The appointments are staggered. We usually have around seven, seven to ten trucks on a, on a day, on a daily basis. So we don't want to have three trucks in our bays. We have to unload them, everybody gets, everybody gets upset that he has to wait for the other trucker. It doesn't make sense.
So it's unlikely to see three other trucks in those bays.
Very, very unlikely. The only place where...
Well, they keep looking at those vehicles in there.
The only place where we have more than one truck at a time is... This, and this shipping, because the shipping is done at night. So we will lay out three or four UPS trailers, load them throughout the evening, and they'll come and pick it up. That's the only place where we'll have more than one trailer at a time.
So there wouldn't be a problem with any traffic on Atlanta Plaza at all?
No.
Any other questions for Mr. Quin?
The only one that I have for you is the rolling gates that I had up there.
They're likely controlled, yes.
So I assume it's authorized to somebody in the building wishing to launch, opening, inviting a truck, giving them a call.
I think they stay open until, sorry, at least they open until the ship stops and close, right?
The only one that stays open throughout the day is where people drive in and out from the ship. The truck and that gate that's gonna be closed, that's gonna be closed.
So then you're gonna be totally secure in that direction. Mr. Quin?
We have no further witnesses in connection with our presentation, obviously.
Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions regarding this application or something, come forward?
Seen none, may I have one?
Mr. Chairman, any motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, is there a complication? Uh, Mr. Quin, is still going to the final time?
Yeah, yes, but we did think to Mr. Venager, we realized that we won't be issuing another letter addressing some of the items, this report, in particular, the elevation.
Briefly, first off, the plan that is given to town doesn't mean all the requirements. If you're trying to light it and have fully parking area as a new shift, there are reasons for not to start the lighting on the area that you're fully parking. Uh, the only reason was that that's, that's existing.
What we show on the plate is existing light.
Existing light doesn't mean a need to.
Oh, no, 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 just saying, I can't really explain that.
We will, as a condition approved, we have no problem submitting to Mr. Venager a revised lighting plan showing the existing by the laws.
So are there no circumstances for me to refer to?
Yeah, and number two, despite the judge, what is new, what is revised on the parking area? I'm gonna have to walk in the parking area and may have to add some curving or some lewasse, but only because if you're ripping this concrete out, you have to restabilize that area, there's some comments that may...
I think, I love, I'm gonna ask that when the motion is made, that those conditions be part of the motion, that we do grant both, for the Friday subject for those things.
Yeah, it is, please be one another.
Because we're not gonna get, if we move this tonight, we're not gonna get to the resolutions, we should...
Right, but that's what I have to mention. One other issue is, we've just had a number of water for our house in the other Atlanta, Lake Farm, etc. And there was no landscaping that we all showed on the plan. And if I made everybody else do some landscaping, they'll take my head off.
There was landscaping, sure. No, I just hope to show is there's green area with green.
Doesn't say what's in that green area.
No, it's mostly grass. The only real, the only landings that would be elusive are two trees, two shade trees that are placed in the area where we're closing this driveway and another one.
You didn't ask for a reddish, more vested, and actually, there should be some form of, some form of landscaping here. Flowering trees along Julio Plaza, I mean, nothing major should be a problem.
No.
And if that would be my, such a good level, just don't...
The advocate, the advocate states that that should not be a problem.
Enhancing the property, enhancing my message.
It's gonna be nice if all that nice fences, stuff, put up.
Yeah, I'm gonna walk this side, I'm gonna walk the way, if there's any engineer, can you remember, you always want the drainage.
Do we have?
Look at the two sides of the single building in the other.
Do we have no problem if you cancel the resolution or include the letter dated March twenty-eighth and recognizing that it will subsequent iteration by Harvard consultants?
Just, I want to add, there's such a collateral address of new collateral issues from D E P, landscaping, lighting, possible resurfacing of certain areas, possible modifications, some of these functions.
No objection.
Prove question, Mr. Chairman, this is four. I have five remaining questions.
Let me move beyond the question for who?
Secretary Urban, may I have a second?
The whole conditions of Mr. Venager's, and...
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Brown, Martin Smith.
Congressman Goldman?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Uden? Aye. Commissioner Joplo?
Aye.
Deputy Secretary Urban?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time, your time, and everyone working hard for this application. Have a great Monday.